So it's really hearing these numbers.
Like this, there's something left out.
But if Noradrock is the only one that brings in this non-oratorial, then the solar farms are going to go somewhere else.
So I guess that could be our best, but I guess I feel I have a good conscience that we're doing all we can to to help protect the citizens of Noradrock. That's kind of, that's to me why we're here. So I can't, I can't do that for Madison or for, although I do, I do have a friend that's on Mass and Planning Board and I shared all this information with them. So maybe, but yeah, as long as we can do our part, I guess it's all, if everybody does their part, we should be okay.
Is this something that you took to the panel? You know what I mean, like towns voters, they may not be in favor of this, they could be all over.
Well, if any ordinance has to be voted on by a town meeting.
Okay.
And this is why Richard is saying we need to, if we're going to do something, we have to have it ready. What is it, March 7th is town meeting? Yeah, it has to be ready to be voted on that day.
Correct.
So. Has anybody studied this? Have we gotten, you're full of info.
I'd like to know more about it. I don't know anything about it.
I'll leave it to the pleasure of the board, but there's, there's, there's a 14 minute, it's 14 minutes and it, it was the best 14 minutes I ever spent in my life listening to getting educated about, about this. If you'd like to do it, we can, I've got a speaker and we can do it. I'll leave it to the board.
Okay.
You got a copy of this in your packet?
Yeah, I know.
Well. This. Yeah, you said this would stop it for 160 days renewable for another 160 days without a town, I'm sorry, 180, without a town vote?
It needs to go to town vote to enact it.
No, the second time.
Correct, the second time, the extension would be the select one.
Okay. All right.
This moratorium would stop the two from being built.
I don't think it can, because you've already approved it, but it would, more generally, there wouldn't be any, any further ones.
And if these two aren't substantially started within a year of their application being renewable. Then they can't do it. Okay. Number nine, what it says with the, the town with the assistance from the town board, code member officer. And other departments intends to study the town's ordinances to determine the land use and other regulatory implications. So.
Contact PUC, the town, say. Is that possible? I'd like to see some more information before I just go. I agree 100%. So I, I. Don't be follows me. That, you know, ultimately, as I said, it's going to get spread across all the FDP customers across state of Maine. You know, essentially getting.
The analogy they put is if you have, you have an easy pass, instead of when you go through the easy pass and a dollar comes off your account, when the solar farm goes through the easy pass, they're getting three.
Right, just because there's all farm.
That was the analogy.
They expecting some kind of federal subsidy to offset that, something like that, or?
By law, CME is required to collect those funds.
Collect those funds from who?
Ratepayers.
You and me.
And you and me and the town in Noradrock and MSAD 54 and Cumberland Farms and every business, every, so again, when every business pays more, I guess what's going to happen to everything else that we pay?
So.
Everything is everybody's stuff.
So, so right now, so when, so when we buy, so say for example, the school here buys, a student's board buys, it's, it's kilowatts from, from CMP and it's not solar. So they're still paying the same rate, 16 cents an hour for that, right?
Yeah, there was, those are reported from Jim Bragg, that's what he's, yeah, no whether, again, companies do have different things because they do off-peak stuff and all that. CME, I don't, I don't know enough about that, so.
Okay.
But, but they do say, they say ratepayers, is how they, that is the term they use.
One of the things, being in construction, I built, we build hydro dams, we build chip burners, we build coal burners, we build gas power, you know, everything. And even if those plants, once we build them, never run a day, they still got paid.
But that's, there's two plants in Maine, one in BZ and one in Southern Park. So that's the, that was, that's the, the other three cents a kilowatt that they back up. I think it's, just you know, that three cents is around 35, I think it's a 35 or 20 million dollars a year just to have backup power available.
It just says that.
Yeah, they just say.
And, and the thing is, like with the chip plants and the coal burners and all of those kind of things, 10 years, we rip them, rip them down, whether they run up and lift or not. Is it the same thing here with solar? Will the solar panels sit idle because they can't produce enough electricity? In some of these cases, and still get paid and just be here as a backup source. And because they're getting paid, you see, we can only put the 25% of all power generated, sitting there on the grid, which is not a mine for. Right now, across the, I know this from electricity, we can only put on 25% of what it's going to be. Well, it's easy to make, can't store it, so. So.
Well, I personally like the idea of putting a moratorium on it.
So we can find out more, I think.
To find out more information and to see what the state is going to do about it.
That's where, that's exactly, that's really where I'm at, is, is that, I, again, I don't know, I don't know who and what did LD711, but they, I, I'm really hoping the state looks at, they've already, there's been something, let's say it's already said that like, ooh, we might have, you know, they may, they're, they're human, they, they make mistakes too. Because they, they, I think they, they're somewhat of the same, we might have been a little too generous with our, with our solar incentives. Right, so that's, that's why.
What did you find out?
It belongs in, in, in the state.
So now that, I agree with you 100%, I think it hopefully gives us some time to, for folks to maybe to catch their breath or a little, think a little bit, say, wait a minute, maybe we need to redo something, it just.
And right at the, the moment, there is nothing coming in, nobody that's, that's even suggested another solar farm anywhere, nothing. So yeah, it would be at least four months before they could even be approved. I also think that the solar energy companies, from what I gather, have all like jumped, gone, oh yeah, and they, they build at least so many of the dark things.
Yeah.
Be able to have a market for it all, I know there's people who won't buy into it too. They send out all these things too, and all kind of buy solar energy from us, like, show me the savings, you know, I have no problem, you know, but this problem is they're not telling anybody what it is, because there isn't one, you know, like there's no Indiana. So I, I think because of that, there's been a natural pause in the solar field building, there's a bunch of them that are excited, they're building them, but like, I don't, I think that wave is kind of over because the solar companies might realize that there's something that works, about like, that mine could dry up, because it's a subsidy, there's no way they're making money subsidy. They're going to make that whole subsidy, they have to subsidize. Pay for it if we don't have them. If we do get them, we're going to pay for them anyway, so they're going to have money. In my personal opinion, I would rather pay the extra for solar than nuclear any day of the week. Okay, that's my.
Okay, that's my personal.
Well, you, you, you're well in January anyway, so.
But that's, I mean, because you gotta dump that nuclear waste somewhere.
Right.
And that's, that's a major issue.
Right, right.
Okay. And not only that, look at some of these places that, I mean, have gone up in smoke.
Yeah.
We.
Right.
Go with this, go through it.
If you want to move forward, yeah.
The ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So do we need to take a vote whether we move forward with, with the moratorium or not?
Should we review the moratorium first?
Well, that's what I just asked, Richard, is should we go through this? And, and see that we all agree on what it says? Because once it's in place, it's a law in the county of Noradrock.
I mean, ultimately, you want to get on the same page, the first 11 bullets are findings, so to say, uh, and then I'll take it to the select board, if that's the pleasure of your board, and then ultimately go to legal, um, forums of law.
Now, what about public hearings?
That's why it's kind of sensitive. We'll have, uh, well, if it goes to a public vote, there'll be a public hearing before. If it goes to a secret ballot vote, it'll be two.
So if we're going to, well, I think, my opinion is that it should go to the open town meeting, because like I said, Mike, you know, there are people who, you mentioned solar power and they're going to be right on it. And, uh, and I think we need someone with knowledge who can tell them the bad points of this solar thing.
So it's not that it's bad.
Right.
It's that we need to find out whether it's, whether it's bad and what position the town wants to take.
Right.
We need to undertake the finding process. And this is going to allow for that.
So I think if you look at a lot of the stuff that's in the ordinance, I mean, we've already proposed the sites, right, in other words, we're gonna say all these things about it's not good for, you know, surrounding, but we've already, we've already determined that in the case of the sites that already exist, these things, a lot of these things don't apply, so it's all has to be about the building, in other words, we are concerned about, so, so, I don't know if you can say that.
I mean, that's bullet two and three, and that comes out of the blue.
Okay, that's okay. Monetary credit to reduce the customer's utility bill. So how does that reduce the customer's utility bill? And that energy billing program is allowing customers to make financial investments.
I think that has to do with the developers, not what you would think is the consumer.
Right.
Right. That's what I'm curious to hear.
It's a developer, right?
Right.
It's, they don't, they don't like the, the language user friendly.
Yeah, that's confusing, that number three.
Correct, reduce, I would say, I would say customer would say solar energy provider, company, solar energy provider, monetary credit to reduce the source, the source facility and the provider's utility bill. Does that make sense, so that it differentiates between a customer and a town in Noradrock who just pays an electric bill versus the people who are the the company, number three, you know what I mean?
We're gonna change the customer to solar energy provider.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
There are going to be people who will probably say, well, I don't care if I saw energy builders up, all of this coming from solar versus oil or so it says number one, it says number five in town, this is an insufficient for a serious public harm. The recovers all from the siding installation operation, I don't know if we need that necessarily, because they've already talked about when we've installed, we don't think we'll do that anyway, it's not like.
We were pretty, pretty in-depth on digging on what kind of harmonies could possibly do.
Right, so.
But that's the biggest one right there is the money, the, what it's gonna cost. I mean, our, um, site plan addresses
Safety issues.
Safety, pollution, you know.
You want to pay that after. Right, so I mean, like that's, that's, we have the one who's in place to take care of that.
Right, but we don't have anything that would address what it's gonna cost the individual.
Right, and I think he's saying we do have the ordinance that would prevent serious public harm, so for us, we would pull that up.
We might want to scratch number five, yeah.
Okay.
What about number four? I mean, we were very, very in-depth in.
Yeah, but we don't have.
We're going to have specific rates though.
Just about.
It wasn't talking about solar energy aimed at that particular thing. That site plan is for, it's for businesses. And that's what I just said, the site plan does govern pollution and things that may be dangerous to people, but it doesn't address the cost. And that's what this is all about. And then number four is a true statement, we don't.
Number six, number six, the sitting installation and operation of commercial solar facilities within the town raises legitimate and substantial questions about the impact of such facilities on the town, including questions as to compatibility such facilities with existing and permitted land uses in the town, potential adverse environmental effects, and the lack of plans and other financial assurances, assurances that the facilities will be properly constructed and decommissioned. That's true, they, they don't, that's one of the things, there is no decommission, if I recall.
Yeah, they, they have to include that in there, yeah, it's gotta be bonded, they were, they told us that, that it's bonded into the,
Yeah.
that they have to have a decommissioning.
I think it's a, maybe a state reg, and if it's not, then it's a generally acceptable standard that they would bond with the, in the landowner's name.
The land, okay.
Yeah.
We got into that early.
Okay.
Um, I think it was the first application that the board ever built was that, and then it came back up again, just to generally, that's what you have to do.
That's my first concern on those, one of the first that we were looking at was a lot of nature and like started was like, what happens when they walk away from that?
Yeah, so, no, I'm right. So do we need number six then, or is that like?
Well, if we're expanding.
I would say from, I'm not a biased perspective, but does it raise legitimate substantial questions about the impact of the facility on areas around it? We don't regulate that.
Right, yes, on areas around it, yeah, yes.
Whether it's good or bad or anything, we don't have that kind of consideration, you know, setbacks or anything like that.
Right.
Right.
So the seven get thrown out to because the site plan review um, does address pollution.
Yeah.
All of those things.
I said the welfare of the town, so welfare of the town. So do we, is like, that's even tax base? Is that considered welfare? Do we, do we have any direction on that yet at all, or is it still gonna be like, we're gonna tax these as?
Uh, right, and it's gonna be taxed, and then what happens is they're gonna end up with an initial high volume and they depreciate something rapidly. That it's almost like it's a detriment to the tax base that you're gonna have that part, you're gonna have that high volume, it's just gonna drop so quickly. And that's, you know, that's how, you don't want that, you want stability. And that's the difficult thing.
Oh yeah. Why does it depreciate so quickly? Because, I mean, these things are effective for 25, 30 years now.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, I will.
It, so it depreciates rapidly off the start and then it slows.
Okay.
Just like a new car, you drive it off the lot and you lose five to 10 grand just by driving it off the lot, and then it
Right.
maintains volume.
They're 25, right, so I think they're only 25.
I think that's, yeah.
So yeah, so I, I think solar is just 25.
25 years.
Yeah. I think that's done.
And it's all, huh?
I think their, their useful license, life is, it's done.
Well, I haven't, yeah, they say that, but I'm still, they've, they've got solar panels that are old, 25 years, it's still cramping out electricity. Maybe they call it very useful, maybe there's a way to get another tax tick back.
So. On number seven, um, do we drop health and safety? And just serious implications for the welfare of the town and its residents and visitors?
I think that's accurate. Yeah, welfare is, no.
Well, compare it to be construed to be a lot of things. General welfare clause of customs.
Well, that's why we're here, is to discuss these things and try to figure it out. I wouldn't want to do it by myself. Did we decide to leave number six alone?
Well, you'll leave, yeah, number six goes, looking at the last part of it says, now I guess I have a question, so we, you know, when we approve these, is, um, is our coenforcement officer, are we, are we, are we doing, is there any, is there any, like a formal check to make sure that they're following any specifications or any standards or anything like that?
No, not really, we're not electrical inspectors, because of the size of our community. And so then you'd end up getting into a place where we don't necessarily have the ability to hold escrow on something like that.
So that's the thing, so they, they can stay, or, you know, but, so, so basically, they're installing these, for lack of a better word, unregulated. So we don't know.
Right, and so there's structures that are conducted, and then like your containment areas and things like that, yes, but yeah, we don't get into the actual, it's not even considered development, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so we, so if you put that in perspective, so we just have someone that's gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna put in 4.8, they're gonna spend 4.8 million dollars on, on a, on a project or on a site, on a, and with no regulation or no, how do we know how deep, how do we know it's, it's gonna be, it's even gonna last 25 years? If they, if they have no one to, for lack of a better word, hold them accountable to, to their standard, whatever our standard is, that we don't know about. I think that's, you know, I'm just taking like a building inspector, you know, if you think about it, you know, a building inspector or plumbing inspector, yeah, you're, you're putting your head in some new jacks and you said it right or whatever.
So right, we have plumbing inspection, we don't have building inspection either.
Right, right. We do have plumbing, I mean.
Right.
And then, but you have to have a licensed electrician to do all your, like, yeah. So, yeah, I, I think we may want to just.
And that might be something that you look at in the ordinance, is that you're gonna pay $20,000 in escrow
Yeah.
for a consultant or something like that, which will be released upon substantial completion of your project.
Yeah.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
You know. Again, that's the pleasure of the voter is to, do they think that it's substantial or not?
Yeah.
Number 11, what is it even here? That it constitutes an emergency?
Because that's the requirement of a moratorium.
Okay.
It has to be imminent, you're supposed to have a moratorium.
Okay. Do we have to include language saying that the ones that are already here are grandfathered for?
Uh, no, that's, um, that's accepted by statute, what there will be in this, if the pleasure is, uh, is to, once there's an approved moratorium, it's gonna be considered, you can set your, um, date of applicability to be that date, but your effective date won't be until town meeting if it were to go and pass.
Yeah.
So then it'll go retroactive to something, if, if there's an applicant that comes in and the select board said, okay, let's put this to public vote, that's gonna be something that sole developers are gonna want to know, they lock the door.
Right.
Okay, you need to know there's a pending moratorium. So in essence, it would be, you know, pull your stuff together if you want to, but probably not wise to submit an application in the interim.
Right.
But what you have is, is valid still.
Yeah.
And that's the further down section under date of applicability and effective date later on.
Right.
Okay. I've done, what does this mean? Apply to all proceedings and applications for a commercial solar facility that were or nor pending.
Or. That were or, just a second, I'm gonna look over. A copy and paste, but sometimes it doesn't.
Any emergency declarations, that's backwards, words in there.
Yeah, top town.
Yeah, top town, that's caused by siding, so it'd be caused.
Okay. Okay. That were or are pending.
Okay, what's it mean? Explain number two.
Number two is what we're just talking about, that the date of applicability could be before the date that it was effective. Okay, so it could become effective on March seventh. But it might have an applicability date that's retroactive to another date. So it could be back to, say, January first or something like that. So that any application that submitted January first or after would be under moratorium. And that's really that pending process of to prevent somebody from coming in and saying, okay, well, it has a pass, but I'm gonna go in and file an application real quick and get it approved before town meeting has a chance to put a moratorium. So I just.
That's legal to.
Yeah, so I just like a date so that the date of applicability could be adjusted.
Yeah. I like the idea of January first because it makes it clean, makes it easy to keep track. So that the effective date and the applicable date are two different days.
Can be, yes. Your applicability date could be January first of twenty two.
Okay.
Your effective date won't be until it's actually approved.
Right.
Yeah.
So then the, the, um, the extension, unless extended, so extended it another hundred and eighty days, so every, can it be extended a hundred, every hundred and eighty days by just one time?
Just one time, and then you have to bring it back for vote from the town.
Okay. So if you bring it back to a vote at the town, if we have an effective January first, and then a hundred and eighty days it gets redone, so that will be, that means January first, twenty twenty three, you don't have one. And then we have, we have a town meeting on March seventh. If you're saying there's gonna be a gap, could there be a gap where some of their people can, if, if we go to have the town vote on it again?
I, we would have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not that a year, a year should cover it, but I mean.
Right.
Just try to think.
I mean, if something does come to that point, then it could end up in November.
Yeah.
Kind of that.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna get some more answers on the net going. That's, that's the big thing. As far as this being something on a town that's gonna be taxed, and that we're gonna increase money, go to the tax properties, and I'm all over it, you know, I mean, it's a it means these farmers are able to keep their fines by, at least now, for some of those solar, I'm all over it. For me, it's the cost piece that you're referring to. I want some answers on that. In terms of, because the net loss could be greater than the net gain in terms of suddenly everybody's taxes, you know, that must take electricity to school, and a lot of us. That's, 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 that's the concern. There's a, I'll get some mention of that. So I'll watch that.
If, uh, is, if you look at, again, this guy's name is Jim LeBrecq, he's an energy advisor, I think he was for the, except for the previous administration. I can't find, you can't find it online, it's been beyond thirty days. But again, I've got, it's maybe, I, I couldn't get it online, but again, fourteen, it was a fourteen minute segment, and he explained it out so well up in an energy building. It's, it's, it was the best fourteen minutes I've ever spent my life. And it's just opened my eyes for, holy spokes, we're in trouble. We are, we are in deep trouble.
This is hard, so. We are. Is this why CMP rates are climbing?
But this is.
Is this the reason?
This is the reason.
But they're increasing by the ones of forty percent, they say.
They're, they're saying anywhere between a minimum of forty eight, probably could be up as a fifty three.
Percent.
Percent. Yes, so if your, your electric bill's a hundred bucks, I'd come January, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and forty eight, a hundred and fifty. And it's gonna be real, telling you.
There's a lot of people that are stressed by that. Anyway.
I'm trying to win, but it's next year.
Again, it's, it's, it's not just, that's, I guess, that's what I, I really wanna drive home. It's not just us personally, it's the town of Georgia, it's City Fifty Four.
Our biggest victim will be solar departments because of their class.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah, they get charged at a different rate.
Yeah.
Rising rate.
Because you use it. Cause you use it, sure. Well, so you're sure it's gonna go, yeah, so it's, everything's gonna go up.
Well, I've made note of these changes that we've discussed. Did either of you guys?
No, I'm, I'm good, I saw we, whatever changes we paid, I'm good about that.
Okay, so what I have here is that in number three, we would change customers who solar interview provider. Is that correct?
Right.
And then we're going to eliminate number five completely. Number seven, eliminate health, safety, and and just leave welfare. On the second page, I just found a couple of typos that you need. And yeah, the same thing on the last page. Is there, did I miss anything that we had discussed?
This doesn't impact individual solar, right, it's more of the revenue.
Correct.
So if we go back to January first of twenty two, that means that it will be in effect until December thirty first of twenty two, right?
Close.
But there is always a state referendum in November.
Yeah, there'll be a moratorium.
Boy, that'll be a big one. So if we feel like it needs to be extended beyond that, we can have a vote on that in next November.
You'd have to do it again, but you're gonna be hard pressed to push it to not have a moratorium developed within a year's time. I mean, the goal is to have a moratorium developed in six months, the hundred and eighty days. And then the board, the select board will then have to justify
Right.
that there's substantial progress being made, and that it's gonna be accomplished in the next hundred and eighty days. Those are the conditions that are required by statute in order for a moratorium not to set up.
I mean, at this point.
And we'll bring somebody from KD COG to help develop this and help answer some questions, or bring in a specialist from Revision or something like that to talk about their opportunities, and, you know, it's gonna be a few meetings of getting people from different fields in to give all signs of it and to educate.
Correct.
And then it's, you know, do you reopen your site plan ordinance, you develop a free standing solar ordinance, or do you not do anything?
Right.
And if you're not gonna do anything, then you let it, you know, the moratorium sunset. And if you wanna do something, then you gotta stay the course in development.
Right. I'm just trying to think, what were, we've already permitted three to begin the process, you know, they might have been completely approved.
I mean, you had what you had from information at the time and regulation at the time.
Right.
I can tell you, this isn't unique. A lot of places are doing this. Bell Brad was one recently in the newspaper, and they've had a couple come through. Each one of them seems to be controversial. They just had another large one come through, uh, and they passed a moratorium back in a special town meeting through a select ordinance, it's the last one. That and wind and something else. So it's happening.
Is it because of, they don't want the fields, or is it because of relation to the charging of the building?
I couldn't tell you. I think, I think when you get down there, it's more about
Visual.
Yeah, visual impact.
Okay.
Few shit, things like that. I, that's one of the big concerns after the fact, you know, we have all these public hearings on Upper Main Street. Well, when you come down off London Hill, if it's ever developed, it's, you know, it's unsightly. Will be.
Right.
To the casuals, or, or so. But when you do what you could in terms of processing the application, and you went by the ordinance from public, didn't say we want added restrictions, things like shielding from the road, what happened up on the River Road project, you know, those green slats that they put through very much appreciated, but it wasn't required under the permit, so.
Right.
Things like that might be things that you want to
consider. Yeah, that'd be true.
And if not, then you can add those conditions on the site plan, but.
Right.
The, the fee structure for, right now, our site plan review charges based on development, well, technically, none of this is development, just their little buildings are developing.
Right.
And so it's their, their bones fade, so if you wanted to address the fees, that will go, we really need to modify an ordinance one way or another to say that there'll be a per panel charge or per, or power.
Percentage of the project cost or something.
You know. Because we got into that, and they all came in, and then it was like, we can't change midstream. And so, no, they all went through, I think, the two hundred and fifty dollar permit to those solar applications.
Wow.
Yeah, that's.
Might have given them a hundred dollars.
That's, 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 that's kind of my, we just, we just, I don't think we had, and again, just do it this too, but it came so fast, I think we just didn't, didn't realize, didn't know, we didn't know.
Yeah, once that LD went for, there was so much tax incentive, and they just, I mean, it was quick.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
So do we have to vote on these revisions that we've made?
Uh, no, because technically, I'll, I'll say that they're not really revisions. I gave you something to work with, and you've made it your own.
Oh.
So if you wanna send the, your version to the select board for consideration, we can do that. You can do that.
They're meeting next month. We are meeting next week, so that, um. Right, I will make a motion that we send the revised the moratorium ordinance to the Board of Selectmen for consideration.
All in favor?
Thank you. All right, now I get to remember what I said, so I can write it down.
Uh, so what I'll do is I'm gonna plan that with the chair's approval, the select board chair's approval towards the top of their meeting, so if you wanna go and provide some of the inside of your perspective as an individual, as a board member, then welcome to do so, probably be beneficial.
Let's say at six o'clock Wednesday?
Starts at six, yeah. And once we get done our regular items, it'll be that.
This is on Wednesday?
On fifteenth, yeah.
There's no way I can either, I will teach. I, I would like to dig dig a little deeper into this.
Well, what I think is that for right now um we get the moratorium in place. And that gives us six months to do, at least six months, to do.
It buys us some time to, to, to get our, to really, to me, wrap our head around, wait, what do we, what do we got going on here? What's, what's happening? You know, because it's, it is, it just came on real fast.
Do you want this?
I have a question both made by a citizen. Different topic. They asked about what the process was going about, yeah, speaking of moratoriums. A moratorium on the marijuana distribution facilities, the number of the panel, I said, why sometimes it's gotta go up for town selection.
It is, there is a marijuana ordinance in place. It was voted on last March.
Okay.
Um.
Also, that particular person in that direction, that's, I have a plaque there.
Basically, what we were, I mean, the state made it legal. But what we wanted to do was to eliminate retail sales of marijuana. That's part of that ordinance. We also wanted to be sure that it wasn't I mean, if, if it's illegal to do retail sale, then the stores in town can't be selling it anyway.
Right.
Okay, and that's what that says. We didn't, I mean, if these guys wanna plant acres of it and, and sell it to somebody by the ton, go for it. You know, we just don't want it sold over the counter. What?
By the ton.
Whatever. But
Some of the growers around here are probably producing it by the time. Well, my thought process is, there's a lot of people who make a job, and they contribute to our society, they can pay the taxes on their land, they can buy a vehicle, register pay the taxes, not more than, like, those more than any, you know.
Well, I don't know if, if Jim is still doing it, but I do know that Jim Hilton leased all of his property that's a property there for his start to someone who was working that.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, there's differences in what gets grown. Usually what's on the land is gonna be him.
Right.
Uh, I think the primary concern, Matt, is, is the retail aspect of it.
Right.
Uh, right now, you're pretty much in an opt-in requirement, so, uh, it's gotta go to a combo, whether recreational or medical. If it's gonna go retail, it's gotta go to a combo, all opt-in right now, so. Uh, that's where we did have an inquiry last couple of weeks, uh, with a Main Street property, looking at medical retail.
Right.
Uh, and, you know, if they're welcome to apply, the square footage would take it to the code office, uh, but it would require transaction town meeting in order to move that forward. So we really did a freeze for anything retail related. The last one that was permitted, uh, in terms of development was up at the old Royal, right? And they came in, they were approved, I think two weeks before this most recent law went in two years ago, and there's been no new, not supposed to be, uh, retail.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, Nate, shall we discuss the budget?
You know, we should, we discussed the budget.
Thanks. What did we pay the secretary for in two thousand twenty one?
Um, what we moved over.
Oh, from twenty twenty?
The one sixty six.
Yeah.
That might be that was, I think, I believe for the first three months. I think we were operating under the old budget.
Okay.
I'll confirm that for you.
So we can pretty much eliminate that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that. All right, so that seminars and training. And has anybody, you did something?
Yeah, I went to Portland.
Okay.
Twice, didn't you?
Once, once to Portland and then I did a
Oh, okay.
You went to Portland.
Yeah, that was free. We didn't pay for that.
Have either of you guys been any kind of training? Are most of them still being offered by Zoom?
Uh, yeah, they've converted back over, but I don't think there's anything on the calendar as of right now.
Oh, okay.
I've been getting notices, but I think it's stuff that I've already seen.
Yeah, it's different stuff right now. You're getting notices for all of the training, I think, John.
Okay, so should we leave the budget for training and seminars at three hundred and fifty dollars?
I make a motion, will we do? Second. All in favor?
Charlie, that's actually an old number that's on that spreadsheet for the first. The Secretary of Clerical Action is zero spent this year because it was the planning board stipends for the first quarter.
Oh.
They were paid out and then it was billed to planning board originally, but now it's all within elected officials where it belongs.
Subscriptions? No, advertising.
There's nothing listed. What?
What did? What did we spend eighty six dollars and forty two cents on?
Uh, those are the subdivision notices and the subdivision ordinance doesn't have any cost for that.
Oh.
Right.
So right now, there's there's nothing being budgeted.
Right. And we haven't had a subdivision as long as I've been here. So it's not often that the planning board actually absorbs those costs. When we had all the waste management notices and things like that, that was all came out of escrow.
Oh, okay. So we don't need to change that. What subscriptions have we got?
Uh, none.
None, okay.
I think John could get maybe this book.
Yeah.
And that just comes
I get.
Admin or with our membership.
Well, I I get to townsman because of being selectmen.
Correct, yeah.
Um, office supplies. It looks like we really don't need more than fifty dollars in our budget.
I agree.
Hey.
Do we make a motion to accept that? Fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept fifty dollars as a budget for the office supplies?
Let me write.
You give me finger cramps.
Fifty dollars. Did somebody second it?
I think Matt did.
Matt did?
Yeah.
Okay, you.
All in favor? Postage.
So we need to put some money in there.
The postage must have been the mailing for the cap division and.
Well, we've been mailing packets most every month just because some people prefer to have a hard copy at home to review. It started with COVID naturally, when everybody's meeting remotely, and then I just never stopped. So if you'd like to have a hard copy of materials, allow having to come down here, I don't mind continuing to mail them, but you know, you probably should budget a hundred bucks.
Okay, is that what we wanted? I mean, I could print mine off.
We are here enough to pick it up too. It's not always easy to come down and pick it up. If it's easy for me to mail it to you.
Hey, I personally like getting it mailed.
Okay. How?
It's convenient.
Make a motion to appropriate a hundred dollars towards the budget of postage? No, is it? Yeah, postage.
Okay.
All in favor? We haven't done anything with professional services.
You haven't, but what did you just do? You wanted to move a moratorium along.
I was just gonna say, we're gonna probably want
Somebody to help you with your moratorium ordinance.
Yeah.
Have your solo ordinance, if it's passed.
Are we? Do we still belong to K B cog?
Yes, from coming to discount.
What kind of a price are we talking?
You could budget, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred.
Woo.
I mean, a budgetary. And then you probably need another five hundred dollars under label.
Wow.
Well, you're gonna want K D cog probably to help you connect with people, attend two or three meetings. Draft ordinance forms. We're not gonna draft the ordinance ourselves. Something like that. And you want to make sure you have the money to be able to do it instead of getting cut short and blow the budget and everything else.
All right, so a thousand, a thousand or fifteen hundred? Or what? What do you suggest?
I would take a thousand cover.
For professional or legally?
Professional. And then I book five hundred in the legal.
Yeah.
And if, you know, she spends an hour on it, you're gonna be saving
Right.
a bunch of money, but if she's going to really delve into it, then you've got the ability to do that.
Yeah, right.
And it's not line item. This is just how we budget so that the public can see what it is.
Yeah.
So if you need to spend more on consultant than you do legal, then
Yeah.
You do like.
You're able to, yeah.
Make a motion to appropriate fifteen hundred dollars for legal, um, professional services.
So the thousand for professional and five for legal.
Right, okay, yeah, we can break it up that way, yeah.
Well, it's it's two different lines here, so.
A thousand for professional.
Second.
I'm still writing.
Don't they have a machine that would do that automatically?
What?
Writing.
And and type it out?
Yeah, I mean, like doctors do their paper printer and
Oh, yeah.
Stick it in the machine and it comes out the other end.
No, they send.
I just try to write the papers that way, it doesn't quite come out the way I think.
All right, I'll for vote.
All in favor?
Okay, now you're going to.
Five hundred for legal.
Okay, you can call for a vote.
All in favor?
I'm not even looking at hands, I'm just writing it down. Okay, what else have we got? Do we need to put anything into subdivision expense? Or contingency is that?
No, that the contingency is a transfer of contingency. So if you did go over budget, that we would transfer your expense out.
Oh.
Yeah, that's just a place all along.
Just trying to think, what would be a subdivision expense?
At that.
Okay, sorry. This is one of the things, as as your own budget goes on treasure referrer, we always like to have something in it. If you have the line, it feels like you ought to have something just in case, even if you don't, even if you don't use it, that doesn't mean.
Right.
But to not have nothing, it seems.
So you, the only reason it's, well, I mean, that's not gonna show on your spreadsheet because there's nothing in since twenty seventeen. It's on there, so that's a line that I'm gonna end up hiding anyway.
Okay.
It's not anything that you don't have history for.
Okay.
I hide it.
All right, so if you don't have this, all right.
Right, I mean, because there's a lot of things you could book to it.
Okay. Right, thanks. Create no history of it, let's talk.
Is there anything else we have to put in here?
So these are our revenue ones after.
Yeah, and we've never forecasted for any revenue. We just say zeros and if it happens, it happens.
No, that makes total sense. That makes total sense.
I find that to be two thousand dollars. All right, I make a motion that we request a budget of two thousand dollars for twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, well. And is there any other business? You don't have anything for us to do. I was kidding. Uh, there is no revision from the.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Well, let me get this out of the way first. Okay. Now, I was just gonna look over my shoulder at that cloth that isn't there. Somebody second the movement, could you?
Oh, you ready?
Yes.
All in favor?
Okay, we are.